Hello?
Hey Sammy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Hello? Can you guys hear me? Hello?
All right, we can hear you.
Okay, great. All right, I'm gonna put you on mute, so you have to allow me time to unmute when y'all wanna talk, but I'm here.
Okay, we're gonna have the invocation if we could. Pastor? We don't have one here. Where's our elder Shelley Hardy, are you here? You're not here. All right, if you would, Mr. Schumake.
Yes.
Would you give our invocation and pledge allegiance, please?
Sure. Dearly Father, please watch over this meeting as we conduct the county's business. Please guide our minds and souls to do what's right for this county and protect the people in it, and do those things that make this the best county inside of South Carolina. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. All right. I think Mr. Tucker is gonna join us by phone, am I correct on that or not? Is he on the phone?
I'm online.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Everybody please turn their phones off like I did. Okay, we have a proclamation. Honoring proclamation placed on the agenda by Councilman Derek Schumake. Mr. Schumake.
Yes, sir. So, we have a proclamation today that I would like to read and then we can make a motion on. So, this proclamation is in honor of a special guest we have here tonight. Mayor and Judge Pete James. How are you doing, sir? So, we surprised him, so he's here. He's here, I think if we did it right, you had no idea this was happening. So, well, so what I would like to do is read this proclamation and then call it for a vote. Proclamation in honor of F.E. Pete James. Whereas, the honorable Pete James has been a resident of Kershaw County, South Carolina for 67 years, having recently celebrated his 90th birthday. And whereas, his commitment in service to Kershaw County and beyond knows no limits. And whereas, as a former Kershaw County magistrate, Judge James was responsible for safeguarding justice for all Kershaw County residents. And whereas, Judge James, who was named Citizen of the Year for the town of Elgin in 1986, served for six years as a member of Elgin Town Council and for 12 years as mayor of Elgin. And whereas, Judge James was a founder of the Elgin Catfish Stomp, was instrumental in securing land for the namesake Elgin Watch Factory, and helped recruit numerous businesses to Elgin and Kershaw County. And whereas, Judge James served as a volunteer firefighter and joined other Elgin citizens by selling barbecue to purchase Elgin's first fire truck. And whereas, Judge James was a charter member of the Elgin Lions Club, an advisory member for First Citizens Bank, a member of the Kershaw County Historical Society, and a founding member of the Blaney Elgin Museum and Historical Society. And whereas, Judge James has been a member of Hillcrest Baptist Church in Elgin since 1957, where he is a Sunday School teacher and has served as a deacon for a total of 12 years. And whereas, Judge James also served the community as a successful businessman in the life insurance business in Kershaw County and was a representative to the Kershaw County Council Chamber of Commerce. And whereas, Judge James has been married to his wife Sylvia Sessions James for 67 years and raised his three daughters, Melody James, Mary James, and Mandy James Smith, here in Kershaw County. And whereas, Judge James served his country honorably as a member of the Air National Guard. And whereas, Judge James is a man of devout faith who has lived a life of servant leadership that stands as an example to all citizens of Kershaw County. Now therefore be it resolved, Kershaw County Council proudly proclaims and dedicates this 11th day of June 2024 as Pete James Day in Kershaw County, South Carolina, in his honor. I would like to make a motion that we adopt this proclamation in honor of Mr. Pete James.
And thank you, Mr. Schumake, for making that motion, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
All right, Mr. Brazel makes a second. Mr. Schumake, would you like to lead off, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I, you know, had a chance to, I actually met you when I was a kid. I was 15 when I was baptized at Hillcrest Baptist Church. And I can say mayor, judge, so many titles, I'll just pick them at random. But Judge James was a deacon there. And then more recently, as I've been, you know, went to run for this office, we've had a few lunches, not as many as I know we need to have. And to talk to someone who was basically there when what we know as Elgin was founded, as we experienced this growth and these issues, it is so important that we talk to those folks who were there at the beginning to see what this community was about, to see really the core of this community. So, it has been an absolute honor and privilege to have you as someone who I can lean on and enjoyed going to your birthday party. And I think that, man, if, one, if I live to be 90, I'll be very happy. But if I live to be 90 and do all this, that's pretty amazing. So again, thank you for being here, Judge, and thank you for all you've done for that wonderful community that I call home and that my parents call home.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Brazel, would you like to make a few comments?
Yeah, absolutely, congratulations, sir. What an honor to be able to honor you and your legacy here tonight. And I like the fact that it's gonna be Pete James Day as well. We also did that recently for Charlie Neese. And that's something to be proud of, so this day is dedicated to you, sir. And my family's been here for a long time, the Brazels originally from Elgin. So, that was my grandfather's generation, so little older than you. But it's wonderful to be able to honor somebody who's a hometown hero. So, good to see you tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. Mr., what's your name?
Tom Wilson. There you go. Yeah. Congratulations to you and your family. Thank y'all for coming out here and joining us. It's not every day that we get to live in the eyes of a community hero. I know there's been a lot of names thrown around, but truly a hero of our community. I really appreciate all that you've done. Your accolades are not, I know they can't fit all in a resolution, but we really appreciate it and we need more people to follow along in your footsteps. Thank you so much, sir.
Listen, thank you so much for that. Listen, I know we have another council member, he's high in the sky somewhere. Did he go to heaven or is he, Sammy Tucker? Can you hear us?
No, sir, not yet.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, and I was trying to do a point of order, but I'll do it after this.
Can we turn it up a little bit?
Judge James, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but they should have a nice silhouette of me up there so you can see me. But I just wanna say, I have always enjoyed your court. I've always enjoyed you as the mayor. But mostly what I'm proud of is being your friend and someone that loves you is the legacy you are leaving for your family, the community, town of Elgin, and Kershaw County. And as Schumake said, it's a blessing to live to be 90, but to be able to do the things and leave the footprints that you're leaving behind for others to follow is amazing and a true blessing. Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, I appreciate that. And I do recognize that we had one of our house members walk in with a larger resolution than ours. But we'll get to that in just a second. Welcome. Anyway, let me just go back a few minutes, okay? Judge, Mayor, I have enjoyed every moment. We go back a long ways, a long ways. I remember, I'm gonna tell a story on him, okay? I remember when I ran the jail, I had some inmates come into jail and I said, "What you got?" And so I got a church bulletin. I said, "What do you mean you got a church bulletin?" He said, "Well, Judge James said that if I come out with a church bulletin, he may let me out." I said, "Would you get the family member to bring you that church bulletin?" But he would, even if somebody came in and sat down, he would talk with them. He'd say, "Okay, I'm gonna postpone hearing this. I'm gonna give you a week, bring me a church bulletin back," and he sure would. You remember those days, Judge? We had a good time and I really enjoyed working with you. And he always was available when it came to working with us at the jail. We had started a new program and it was where we were very innovative at that time. 25 years ago, we had the house arrest home, detention, things like that. And Judge James was always available, always there if we needed him. All we had to do, oh, Lonnie Anderson, bless his heart, Lonnie Anderson, you remember? All Lonnie Anderson had to do is give one call to Judge James and he was there. Judge James, you're an honorable man. I love you. You're kind-hearted. You've served your community extremely well. And I can say that I have been blessed to have been parallel with you for about 20-plus years. And I will always take that with me wherever I go. And I cherish our friendship. I cherish our talks that we've had. And, you know, I got to know Melody a point in my life there and really enjoyed that as well. I don't see her as much anymore. I tell you about Melody, I'm just not about Melody, and that's about you, but I'm gonna tell you something about your daughter. I walked into a court one day. I had a hat on, she said, "Take your hat off." I said, "Yes, ma'am." Oh, boy. But anyway, she may not remember that, but I do. But anyway, thank you. I wanted to say this to your family. Thank y'all. Thank y'all for all, the whole family, for what you've done for our community. And as I said, my friend, I love you and I'm there for you. If you ever need me, all you gotta do is call me, you know that. We've had many talks and we're gonna have many more. God bless you, my brother. And I am so proud to be part of this tonight. And there's not enough words to sit here and say, and I want to thank Mr. Schumake. He has worked, he has been on me. He's been aggravating. He wanted to make sure this was so right tonight. And I tell him, I said, "This is yours." I said, "Brother, you put it on there and, you know, you earned the right to honor this wonderful, wonderful individual." And Mr. Schumake, I just wanna say thank you. You've done an outstanding job here tonight. And to all my colleagues on County Council for honoring to what I consider one of the finest men I've ever known in my life. And I mean that with my heart. God bless you, brother. Thank you so much. And we look forward to many, many more. And by the way, if I said I was gonna live to be 90, my wife would say, "Quit threatening me." All right? So anyway, having said that, yes, you can, sir. Can I, come on, come on, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do one thing. Come on up here, sir, I want you to stand right by that mic. And if we can, we're gonna, yes, I wanna call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, let it, excuse me. All right, let it be known that Mr. Brazel, Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Tomlin, Jimmy Jones vote in favor. Mr. Tucker?
Uh, yes.
Wake up, son. Okay. Yes, it's unanimous for us that here.
And we're gonna get a picture of you with all your family and stuff, so, but go ahead, please.
The proclamation passes. Now, Judge Mayor James, it is your night. Say whatever you want, buddy.
I'm really at a loss for words, but I have enjoyed what I've done. And, you know, God didn't put me on this earth to not help my fellow man and to help my community.
Danny, put, Danny, put.
Because I'm here and I want to see this county continue to be a great county. It's got so much history. But I'm overwhelmed tonight. I just, I'm not saying really, I don't know if y'all are talking to the right fella or not when you're talking about all this. But thank y'all for this and I always cherish this. And my family, I couldn't have done it without them. They've been very supportive. My wife, she's been taking care of things while I was out doing these community and county involvements. But it's been a great thing and I've got great friends. And friends are more important than money. I'll say that any day. And thank y'all so much for this, thank the county for giving me this day. It was totally a surprise.
Listen, Mr. Schumake did a good job, Judge, he did a good job, he kept it.
I thought somebody else was gonna make the talk here. Yeah, I was brought here. I might have put on my suit if I hadn't.
Well, I wanna tell you.
But thank y'all again.
We thank you. But.
12 years we've been together. And just like to, we got along just great.
Get up there beside him, Judge Hardesty, I want you to say a couple of words with him, please, because y'all worked together for 12 years. And I think it would be very appropriate.
But thank y'all again.
Well, we thank you, sir.
Yes, we spent 12 years together and it was a wonderful time in the magistrate's office, those 12 years with Judge James. He had time for anything he wanted to do, he had time for it. Even though we were busy, he would take time, he talked to, actually, he taught to more people than I did. And I thought I talked to everybody. But Judge James, he would talk to anybody about anything and he was knowledgeable on most anything he talked about in this. I was glad when he came aboard because he took a load off of me holding court. And I enjoyed him, his 12 years. And the only reason he retired, he turned.
he turned 72 years old, and at 72, we have to retire. He would still be judging-
He would.
-if there was no law. He loved it. I mean- I miss it to this day. Now, I don't. I spent 30 years there, and I walked away, and I was glad.
Well, both of you did a wonderful job.
We had a good time together.
You did.
Very good court. The magistrate's office was in good shape back then. We done a very good job, I think, with everything we did. We never got in trouble. Columbia never called us over there. Chief Justice never called us over there. So we done very well, I think.
And he was always available, Judge Hardest. He sure was, always. You know, Judge James, thank you so much, and I really mean it. We're not done yet, because, as I said, we had a member of the House walk in. I'm gonna recognize him in a minute so he can present his honor. But I'd like to say, would any member of the family like to say anything before we do a picture?
And I would like to, Mr. Chairman, we have, I wanted to say, some special guests that we also have. We have Mayor Emmons, I see in the back. I see Chief Anders, Councilman Hanley from the Elgin Town Council. Any of the other Elgin officials back there? Did I get anybody? Oh, and I see Sergeant DeLong there, back there. So we've got some folks from the Elgin Police Department and Elgin Town Council that are here as well.
Well, thank you, and thank you for recognizing. Glad to have, come on up, Judge. I never forgot you told me to take my-
I don't remember that, Jimmy. Anyway, I've probably broken everything my dad told me or taught me to get him here tonight. So I had to tell a fib or two. But that's okay. I just wanted to say, the one thing with growing up, and anybody that's been around Dad, is he has what's like an Andy Griffith philosophy, and which he teaches people things. I remember one time he had a ball on his desk, maybe Judge Hardest remembers this, and it had all these rubber bands just wound and wound and wound. And somebody would tell him a story and say, "What am I gonna do?" And he'd hand them the ball, and they'd say, "What you want me to do with this?" And he said, "Well, you need to unwind it." And he said, "Well, that's gonna take some time." And he said, "Well, yeah, your situation's gonna take some time, too." So he's always reverted to a very simple and plain philosophy that I think has helped out his fellow man. And I'm not a nervous person. I talk in front of people all the time, but this is making me nervous. I don't know why.
You're not. I agree with that.
Yeah. So that's what I do for a living.
I know that.
Yes, I'm a lawyer, right? But it is. And thank you, Derek, for helping put this together.
That is-
Well, thank you for all the help getting all that stuff together.
Yes. Listen, if we could, if council doesn't mind, I'd like, before we do our pictures and everything, I'd like to ask, one, we got Representative Conell out there, and I certainly want him to come up and present his. But before we do that, any member of the Elgin leadership, the chief, or any of you, the mayor, does anybody want to stand up and just say a couple of words? Come on, Mayor. You know, this is, listen, to me, this is a very special night. And I know I like fast meetings, but this is too important.
I won't try to do it without crying, because I've known this man all my life. I grew up in church with him. I had the pleasure and the honor of serving under him as his mayor pro tem. I learned real quick, when he asked for something, you respond. You do not hesitate. He taught me very well, though, the basic fundamentals, and what he said about friends are worth more than money. Investing in a life, having the opportunity to make a difference in a life, is worth more than anything in this world. And I've learned that from watching him, and I still have the pleasure today. I love it when he comes in my office, and he'll ask me, "You got a moment?" And absolutely, I do. Even if I'm in the middle of something, it's gonna be put to the side because I'm gonna listen to some words and wisdom from a gentleman who has taught me very well, and loves our community, and wants only the very best for it. So I'm so thankful that you guys recognized him tonight. He is well-deserving of this recognition, and Elgin would not be Elgin without Pete James.
Thank you. Amen on that. Thank you. Okay, if we could, thank you, Mayor, so much. You do a great job, Mayor, too. We appreciate you being here. If I could, I want to call down Representative Conell. Would you come on down, please, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. I appreciate that. I just want to come on behalf of the Kershaw County delegation tonight and say thank you for your service to the public. Growing up, I always heard your name, and now that I'm grown, some people might say, I always hear your name. And so anybody who's involved in public service in Kershaw County, we gotta stand on the shoulder of giants, right? While we stand here, I might look a little bit bigger than you. We all stand on your shoulders. Thank you for laying a great foundation for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Conell. Well said. Appreciate you being here. All right. Judge James, it is your night, or your day, and we're proud to honor you. And having said that, you got your proclamation?
Yeah, we have it framed. We've obviously read it. Now, Judge, we'll take a picture with it. We have two council members that aren't here in person, so once they sign that, we'll get this framed out to you and your family.
But we would like to go ahead and get the family up and get some pictures.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd say bring up the, you know, the Elgin folks, basically. Anybody who's here for Mayor James, come on up. Let's get a big picture.
Let's do a big round of applause right now. Don't leave, Judge. We're gonna do a picture. You know, I can't believe I didn't ask the sheriff if he wants to say a few words. Come on, Judge.
Come on in.
Come on in.
Help me a lot. You know, I have to follow your-
You're a million and a year.
Do you like, is this your wife?
Listen, everybody get up here. You guys get sent up.
Melody, my mom.
Keep squeezing in on this side. Squeeze, squeeze, squeeze. Okay, everybody, just keep smiling. One, two, three. One, two, three. For one second. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you get a picture of him and his, just him and his wife up here? The guy, the daughter.
Lauren.
Lauren. Can we get a picture of him and his wife up here? Can you imagine?
Who's that taking pictures?
I think that's a picture that all the, he don't be all us in that picture.
Very good. Derek, you got that? If I could say something, too. Judge James, before we end, he did a book on his life. I don't know if many of you have seen that. I actually still want to get a copy of that, Judge. The book of your life that you put together, or somebody put it together, that is really a lot of historic value in that, I mean, a lot of historic memories in that that I think everybody really enjoys seeing. But I wanted to put that to you. With Judge James, thank you so much. We're so proud to honor you tonight, and it has just made it very, very special. All right, having done that, gentlemen, thank you, and Mr. Schumake, thank you again. All right, having said that, let's go back to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda.
All right, you made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Schumake, second. Okay. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. All right, all in favor, raise your hand. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Okay, he votes yes. Let it be known, it's unanimous. All hands are raised. Okay, if we could, public comments. We have public comments coming up. If you would, Mr. Schumake, do you have a copy of our ruse?
Uh, yeah. Can we go over?
Yeah, read the ruse, please.
Yes, sir. Happy to do so. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to share information with council. It is not a time for debate or questions and answers from council. It is a time for council to receive input, and not a time for council response. In short, during the public comment period, council will listen to public comment, but not comment on those. Individuals requesting to speak must sign up with their name, topic, and phone number. Offensive and inappropriate comments will not be tolerated. If a group would like to speak to council, we request that a spokesperson be selected and indicate that the group, indicate the group they're representing on the sign-up sheet. The public comment period is limited to five minutes maximum allowed per speaker, with a maximum time of 30 minutes. If more than six people sign up, then the total time of 30 minutes will be divided by the number of persons who sign up. Public comments to council as an agenda item shall continue uninterrupted and be livestreamed by audio and video until the public comments' agenda item is finished and concluded, and these rules may be altered by a single vote of county council.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Mr. DeBeauz, excuse me. Mr. Robinson, do you have the number? How many people signed up?
Just one.
We have just one. All right, would you call him up, please?
Tom Webb.
Mr. Webb, welcome. Come on up.
I wanted to speak a little bit about John Comer. He was at D-Day in the Navy, 1944, June the 6th. But first, I've got a poem, "D-Day Men." He's a man too young to cast a boat, but he's cast upon the sea. To crowd aboard a landing boat for the beach at Normandy. The moon and tide affect his ride, and his boots fill up with water. Though fate decides perhaps he dies, he'll give the Reich no quarter. From the awful ocean wreckage to the strand of bloody sand, time plays tricks to stop and stand. Then up the hill and on ahead, it seems unreal and always will, so many men so dead. Now, anywhere these rifles reached, a lesson's clear they came to teach. Men are not just lumps of coal to feed a Nazi fire, or any other ism that steals a man's desire. And like those men from way back then who fought the New World Order, we'll have to fight that sin again that's here inside our border. Socialism's creeping while the world again is sleeping, and nothing's ever over as we carry on our load. There's a battle always brewing further down the road. So celebrate the honor, the duty, and the glory when someone special comes our way to tell the D-Day story. Lily Marlene, the cliffs of Dover, and "Don't sit under the apple tree." A rhythm, a rhyme, a melody of some old favorite tune. We back to '44 again, and then the 6th of June. All those ships and planes and tanks are men of higher ranks, and all of y'all, without much say, of course you have our thanks. Even the Huns who fought in vain to cuss you while retreating, y'all saved them from a harsher fame, and they'll thank you for the beating. Anyway, I'm glad to say, real Americans ain't to blame, and when they heard their country's call, the D-Day men all came. John Comer was in the Navy, and he was on a landing craft, and the crew, he said, as he approached the beach at Normandy, ship to his right hit a mine, and one to the left was hit by artillery. But he did a lot of praying, and he came through unscathed. So, but years later, they had a rededication, a remembrance of the D-Day invasion at Normandy, and there he sat, rows and rows of people. But they were where the graves are. I think it's about 6,000. It's incredible. D-Day has sometimes been referred to as the longest day. Anyway, they couldn't find his chair where he was supposed to sit. John Comer couldn't find his chair. So they put him in the front row, right next to Obama. And they shook hands, and I shook, later I shook John Comer's hand, so that's the closest they ever came to Obama's hand. But while they were there, they chatted briefly, and John Comer said that, President Obama told him that when he gets back to South Carolina, tell his friends that Obama said, "Hey." And John Comer said, "I almost said, but I didn't quite say it." Well, that won't take long. But speaking with a reporter later, it got in print as though he had actually said it. I think it's a shame what y'all do sometimes, you on county council. It's called progressivism. Little by little, you're whittling away at our freedom that those people struggled so hard for, and that war and other wars as well. You're nibbling off little pieces of our freedom. You don't know it, I don't think. I don't think you realize it, but sometimes you don't read your ordinance as well. So, anyway, John Birch Society is showing the Constitution as the solution. We'll have the last one in a series of six this Thursday at 7:30 at Patriot Coffee downtown. We'll start it again in August, going through six videos. If you need more information, well, can get hold of Crisanda Torres. She's leading the discussion. I'll leave this up here if anybody wants to see it. My time is running out, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All right, we're moving to number seven, approval of minutes.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the May 28, 2024 meeting.
All right, sir, thank you. We have the motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Schumake second, and Mr. Brantley makes the motion. Okay, is there any discussion? How about you, Mr. Tucker? How do you vote?
I vote yes, Mr. Vice Chair.
Do you have any discussion?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Nobody has any comments? Okay. All in favor? The record showed that Mr. Brazel, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Brant, Brant Thompson, and Jimmy Jones vote in favor. All right, it is unanimous. All right, we're moving. And you voted yes, correct, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Good. All right. Number eight, ordinances, second reading. This year, 2425 millage, an ordinance setting the millage rate for Kershaw County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024. All right, we have a motion to put this on the floor.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, excuse me, approve second reading with a three-mill increase for our 2425 budget fiscal year.
All right, so which is in this, that is already established in this ordinance right now, correct?
No, sir. It was advertised, no, sir. It was advertised correctly, but what you have before you does not have the three mills in it.
Correct. Okay, so you're asking to do an amendment?
Well, yes. Well, the second reading, I'll make a motion that we approve the second reading of the millage for 2425, and then I'll do my amendment.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the second reading, 2425, as it is, with no millage, correct? So the value, this is just approving the value of the mill, right?
Well, it's, so he's gonna, he's, yeah, right, but then he's gonna move to increase it for the third reading of the budget, because we got, set the mill-
He made the motion, Mr. Brazel, to start with, to include a three-mill increase. Okay? I was told before this meeting that the three-mill increase was already in the millage, so I have two different thoughts there. So anyway, you're making the motion. To approve it as is with- As is.
Well, when we got our ordinances set, we decided to separate the millage and the budget into two separate, correct?
Okay. Let's do this. Okay, let's go ahead.
We're getting all twisted up.
We are, we are. We're getting all, let's go. We have a motion to put it on the floor as is, with no millage increase. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Tucker?
Right. Let's go there, as it was in first reading, which was-
As it was in first reading. Very good, very good. Thank you. That's where I was trying to go with this. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. All right, let me ask you this.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Any discussion?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Go ahead.
I would like to make an amendment to my motion to increase the mills by, increase the millage by three mills.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion to raise three mills in the reading of the millage ordinance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Wait a minute, I'm confused. Is this even the proper time to do that? It says, "Setting the millage rate."
Yes, it is.
So we're setting the millage rate. We're not setting the amount of millage. That would be done in the budget. Am I wrong in that? I could be wrong.
Yes, you are.
The millage is what the dollar amount is already identified. This is gonna identify the number of mills based on that dollar amount that we will apply to Kershaw County budget.
Okay, so in this, in our agenda, it doesn't say-
Okay, so in, in, in this, in our agenda, it doesn't say how many mills we have or how many we're gonna add. It said, he, he, he's suggesting that we add three, but, uh, I don't, I don't have any.
So there should be an attachment there, so reflecting.
What page?
Should be the very back page of the ordinance, or the only, the only item there.
So, so the thought process is to go from seventy-two point two to seventy-five point two, is that right?
Correct, if, if the, uh, motion prevails. So this, again, will just be the number of mills based on that dollar amount that we apply to these respective.
What, we need to separate the sheriff's budget first, or we do that afterwards?
So if I can speak on the finance committee side.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the thought was, because that's the actual budget, when we do third reading of the budget, we'll make a motion to amend to take one of those mills out and split off the sheriff's budget. So this is only to set the millage rate, and since the sheriff hasn't been spun off on mills yet by vote, it's just those categories. Once we do third reading of the budget.
Hold on, Mr. Tucker, I, I know you're getting at.
Once we do third reading of the budget, we'll spin the sheriff off.
Okay, no, 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 it makes sense. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Brazel, you, you have your questions answered?
Y- yes, thank you.
Okay, are you satisfied? Are you satisfied with the way it's being handled?
Uh, no comment.
Well, I will say no. Okay, anyway, all right, is there any other discussion? Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir.
All right, do you have any, do you have any comments, anything you want to say?
I, 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 well, just to make sure everybody's clear, um, these three mills will go into the general fund, and as Mr. Schumake said, when we come out for third reading, we will separate the entirety out for the sheriff's budget, uh, on the June the twenty-fifth in total millage. But right now, these three mills are going into the general, uh, fund account, just so everybody can be clear and, and understand.
Yeah, and how much are you separating out of the, uh, for the sheriff, again?
That'll be next, uh, conference meeting, but it will, uh, it'll be approximately twenty-four point something. I don't have that number in front of me right now.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion?
But the finance committee met last week, so.
Great, thank you so much. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Tomley?
No, I, I, and this is basically what we discussed last meeting during our second reading of budget as well. Um, same, same concept there. Um, and I, as I said before, I support law enforcement and our first responders. This is, this mill increase is for our employees and for law enforcement directly. I'm always gonna be in support of law enforcement.
Mr. Brazel, would you like to respond?
Well, I don't wanna fuss, but I, I think.
That's not fussing, it's just stating how you feel.
We, we can do that. We're not doing that tonight, though.
Well, let me just say this.
So I, I'm gonna vote against the amendment, and I wanna be real clear that, that I'm also support law enforcement. Um, I just, I don't like using them as a reason to raise taxes. We could, we could cut off as much or as little as we wanted and let him be on a separate millage. Um, we all know that. So, um, with the sheriff being in the room, I'm looking forward to, to giving you the natural growth that you desire for your budget. I think that's what I've heard you say, um, several years ago, and year after year. I just want my piece of the pie to grow along with the county so I can properly serve. And that, that's the biggest part of what we're gonna do tonight, is we're gonna allow you, well, not tonight, it'll be the next meeting, is, is.
Correct.
Separate it and let you be able to do that.
Very good. Let me just say this, that, uh, I think the finance committee has worked very hard, and I know that they, they've come with a recommendation, and I'm not gonna support this tonight, because I just don't think, when you talk about increasing the millage, I just, guys, I, times are tough. Really tough out there. And I just think we have to really tighten our belts as well, and, and I know that our law enforcement, we have a jail to bill, we've gotta figure out how we're gonna do that. We'll probably have to go do a bond or whatever, that's all for another day and story, but nobody's really brought that up and addressed it. But it's, it's, we're talking about a huge, huge amount of money, and where's it gonna come from? So, I'm, yeah, well, having said that, any other comments?
Well, I think the biggest takeaway, and, and something that I'd like to mention, is the fact that we've got four and a half million dollars more in the budget without any additional millage. So, so what is that? The equivalent to like, almost fifteen mills?
Well, yeah, that was a point of discussion we had the other night, and you bring up Valley Port on that.
So, I, I think we can, I, I think we can fund.
Hold on, Mr. Tucker.
The sheriff's office, and you're only gonna get one mill of, of the tax increase. Three hundred, what, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars? Is that what it is, Mr. Administrator?
About that, maybe a little.
Sheriff, didn't I give you a proposal that, that would've given you three-quarters of a million dollars? I did, he's nodding yes.
Okay.
So, I just, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna paint this as, as something it's not. It's, it's a tax increase, and, and I'm sure it's got plenty of good places to go. Um, I've actually heard from some other agencies that, that are requesting more money. I won't name those agencies because they do good work here in the county, but it's, I think it's, it's, it's more of a tax increase for, for, for all, rather than ju, I, I, I don't want the sheriff to have to wear that as, this, this is a tax increase for me, not when you're only, you're only getting a third of, of the increase. Um, that's a fact, so.
I, I do agree with that.
But anyhow, Mr. Jones, you can call the vote whenever you're ready.
I will, but I just want, uh, Chairman of the Finance Committee, do you have anything you wanna say? And I think this is a very important discussion. Go ahead.
Y- yes, sir, and, and, um, just wanna say this right here, um, and I respect everybody's opinions and thoughts. Um, what we're doing tonight, and we can talk more in detail about the budget itself on the twenty-fifth, but tonight, we're paying for the bills we have created in second reading of the budget. So in other words, we have, we have already, uh, allocated the monies out in second reading, that passed by majority of council. Now, we're sitting here to make sure we'll be able to write the check to pay those bills, because those two have to match at the end of the day, or the budget is not balanced, and we have not done our job. So, um, understand everybody's take, positions, and all that, um, but actually what we're here now is to balance the checkbook.
I hope everybody else can balance theirs as well.
Yeah.
Taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. Let me just say this too, okay? We can also pay our bills and do it without the millage increase, and I, what I'm gonna do, I will bring back a proposal next, at the next meeting, that will not require a millage increase. Okay? And, uh, we'll find the money elsewhere. But anyway, having said that, all in favor of this tonight, raise your hand with the three-mill increase. This is the amendment, correct? Yeah. Or the amendment, did, does everybody accept it? All those in favor? We have Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Thomason, who? Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
You in favor?
Yes.
All right, that's, that's, and all those voting no, raise your hand. Brazel and Jones, it passes, third reading. That's the amendment. Now, all, now let's take a vote on the, uh.
Second reading, second reading.
Excuse me, see, I got it. On the second reading, ordinance, uh, as amended, all those in favor? Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, he, you vote yes, uh, so we got, uh, Mr. Thomason and Mr. Schumake voting yes, all those against? All those against? How do you vote? Okay, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Jones, vote against. All right, let the director show that it passes. All right, thank you, moving on. We have B., third reading, case twenty-four eleven, an ordinance to amend Kershaw County, South Carolina Uniform and Zoning Land Development Regulations to amend, table three-three, to allow for gun club and skeet shooting ranges, as well as a, uh, excuse me, hunt clubs and other amusements, as permitted use in all primary zoning districts within the unincorporated areas of Kershaw County. All right, is there a motion to put this on the floor?
I'll make a motion, we approve third reading of case twenty-four eleven.
All right, Mr. Thomason makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brazel. All right, any discussion?
I have some discussion. I, I, one thing that I was, as we were looking at this, and I'm, I'm talking to some of the, the county attorney and the legal stuff, I would like to make a motion to amend. I'll make the motion, and then I can discuss it. I would like to make a motion to amend to allow for gun clubs and skeet shooting ranges as permitted uses in B-two, RD-one, RD-two, and MR-D-one, and designate the off-street parking requirements as not applicable to gun clubs, skeet ranges, hunt clubs, and other amusements. That's my amendment.
All right, you heard the amendment. Is there a second? That amendment? I'm gonna second that amendment. All right, Mr. Schumake, you head floor.
Yeah, basically, the concern that I have after looking at this and talking to the lawyers is that if it passes without this amendment, then in theory, even in R-sixes and R-fifteens, gun clubs and skeet ranges would be allowed. And I think, I mean, I know, you know, obviously, you know, over in my district, which is pretty condensed, the idea of having a, you know, a full-on hunt club or skeet range on a, a one-acre parcel, I just don't think that what those zoning uses were intended for. So that would be, that would be my amendment. Um, I, unfortunately, I don't know that I can support it without that amendment, just because I'm concerned that, again, I'm happy to come back and revisit.
Can we get a copy of that in writing?
Yeah. This one? There you go.
Oh, excuse me, go ahead, Ms. Schumake, you head floor.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's basically what I, what I have.
What qualifies as a hunt club? What, what is the legal definition of hunt club as far as our ordinance is? Is that an acre? So if me and some buddies have an acre property, and we decide to go out there and put one deer stand up, and it's, is there, is that considered a hunt club? I don't know if that's a legal question or, or not.
I think it's a good question.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm not sure what qualifies.
I've got one acre with a deer stand on it.
I, I do too. I do too, and I think it's actually an R-fifteen. So I don't know if I wanna, I could name it Brant Thomason Hunt Club, and then I might not be able to shoot a deer on that piece of property.
Yeah, it's, it's, so like, I, I understand, I understand your concern, because they brought it to me as well. I think, um, who, who brought this up? Because you, you clearly said that it wasn't the attorney, so somebody, somebody within the county's bureaucracy brought this to the attention of Councilman Schumake.
Yeah, no, they brought it to attention of me, sir, not Councilman Schum, they brought, excuse me, let me say something. I'm gonna ask you a question, I'm gonna ask you a question, but just hold on, okay? Now, Mr. Robinson brought it to my attention when I got here this afternoon, and I looked at it, and the first thing I said to him was, "Bring it to your attention." Okay, that's how that, that's how that unraveled. And Mr. Schumake looked at it coming down into this room, and I'm glad he brought it up, because I think it brings some good discussion. And, uh, so.
Well, he's gotta, he's gotta put it out.
Now, now, let me say this. Excuse me, Mr. Brazel, let me say.
Piped up.
Hold on a minute. Yes, he does. I don't know who called Mr. Robinson prior to him getting with me. Was it a, was it a staff member?
So, Mr.
How did this all come about? I, I, and, and Mr. Brazel's got a legitimate concern there. How, who brought this to your attention?
Mr. Jones, as, as you know, Mr. Both, Mr. DeBose is right of town, so I'm covering on behalf of.
You are.
Our firm, and on behalf of these two gentlemen. Um, and it's nice to be back at Kirk.
Thank you, welcome, we're glad to have you here.
So, as, as you're aware, the, um, the agenda was published this week, and we had a conversation just about the items on the agenda. Um, and you asked our office to make sure that we knew everything that was going to be on the agenda, and be prepared for any questions that might arise.
Correct.
Um, or everything on.
Did it with the, all the agenda, correct?
All the agenda items, including the millage and otherwise.
Correct.
As a result of that conversation, um, we met with, um, the administrator, and we met with planning and zoning, collecting the two items, um, that, you know, had some explanation regarding the ordinances.
Okay.
And also, we did some research on P-Buck, which is gonna be on the agenda, um, after this, um, and some of the questions that were raised by staff, and this is, these aren't new, these questions were in the previous packets, that, um, I think there was a presentation by Attorney Hill when this first came to the council's attention. So, um, some of the questions that were raised by staff is, we, they were removing in its current form, um, the, uh, the, I guess, the, well, well, they were adding nine.
Keep talking to Mike, talk, would you talk, Mr. Ross, talk into the mic, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Um, one of the quest, one of the questions that came up during our discussion with staff is, would this allow gun, um, clubs, skeet shooting clubs, and hunt clubs in residential neighborhoods in the unincorporated areas? And that discussion, um, you know, having grown up here, neighborhoods that came to mind, um, uh, Valley Park, Cool Springs areas, Fredericksburg, would it apply to that? And the answer was yes, that these, these, um, this would remove the restrictions that would presently, um, bar skeet shooting, um, clubs, gun clubs, and hunt clubs in those neighborhoods, if, if it were passed as is. Um, and then, uh, there was also a discussion about the language regarding other amusements, um, and what would be included in that, and there's a long list in the NAICS of other amusements, um, that the, um, would be permitted, but, and, because it would basically be removing, um, any of the restrictions countywide on any of these items, anywhere in the county, no matter where it was, whether it be a business, an office, a neighborhood, this would remove the restrictions, um, that are currently in place for skeet shooting clubs, gun clubs, and, um, gun clubs. Um, I reported back to you, as, 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 as you requested, that these were the responses we got, and if there were any questions, um, you, uh, in, in our conversation, you asked me to be prepared to respond and have something in writing, should that issue become an issue, um, or questions relating to the, uh, neighborhoods. Um, I did that, it's very short, I think you saw, it's about six lines, um, just what would the amendment, I called Mr. Brazel earlier this week, um, and I was able to talk with him today.
You called me earlier this week?
Yes, left a voicemail, um, and was able to talk with you today, and then Mr. Schumake, I saw in the hallway, um, and you introduced me to Mr. Schumake, and, um, and.
So you took it upon yourself to have this amendment ready, to hand it to the councilman who was ready to make the amendment? Is that, is that right?
Mr. Jones asked me to prepare it, and I did do that, yes.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Brazel, let me make myself clear, so we're not putting stuff in there that doesn't belong. I asked him to go through the entire agenda, and to tell me if he had, if there were any concerns in there whatsoever, if there were, for any item to bring to my attention.
Mr. Jones, may I ask a question after your talk?
Yeah, hold on a second. And then he did that, and of course, that's where we are now. And of course, he had talked with the pla, I think the Planning and Zoning Director.
Yes, and, and, and asked today, um, you know, if, if this comes up, and, and of course, Mr. Brazel.
And then somebody reached out to you prior to the meeting?
Yes, he talked, we talked about it prior to the meeting, and he was asking my, you know, I, well, he had mentioned that he had met, talked to you guys about it, and I asked him what, what that was about. He shared those concerns, which mirrored some concerns I've got, particularly.
Like ten minutes before the meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, but I mean, not.
It was, and that was at my request, and I was walking down the hallway with Mr. Brazel. I said, "You wanna share those thoughts with Mr. Schumake, see what he thinks?"
Yeah.
Which I was very glad.
Because originally, when this all started, my original thought going into that meeting was, we were gonna take that particular zoning classification, allow skeet shooting and hunt clubs, and then that meeting sort of went kind of off the rails, and it ends up being a discussion about whether we remove it countywide. So, as I thought about it, I had some real concerns, and I thought this amendment addressed those concerns, so, um, yeah, I mean-
It's called, yeah, thank you, Mr. Jones, I'll let Mr. Thompson say, it's called making sure all of you guys have the information, not just one or two of you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Um, Mr. Robinson, doesn't the state of South Carolina, in order to hunt, you have to have a license, right? License through the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources?
It's not a yes or no question.
All right, yeah, well, yes. In order to legally do it, past the age of sixteen, you have to be-
Right, past the age of sixteen.
And, and in order, when you're hunting, the different games, their list, in order to fire, to fire a weapon within a certain number of feet of a major road, a house, correct, that is already South Carolina state law.
So you can't shoot toward any person?
Toward any person, and if you have to be three hundred feet-
Mr. Thompson, let him answer the question, please.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, I'm, I'm asking-
I mean, I'm serious about that, that is just disrespectful. If you're asking a question, let him, let him finish it.
You can't shoot toward any person or any structure that might contain people, I think that's probably correct.
Yes, sir, and, and I believe it's a hundred and fifty feet or three hundred feet away from a highway, or something, when you're dove, dove hunting?
Yeah, there's plenty of state laws.
Yeah, there's plenty of state laws, right? So, my, my whole point in this is R-15 isn't gonna change any more or less by doing this compared to what the state law's already there.
And then you've got industrial and general development properties that are in here-
Mr. Brazel, Mr. Brazel.
Excuse me while I'm talking.
No, no, Mr. Brazel.
You've got general development properties in here where their businesses already existed.
Mr. Brazel, you had not been recognized. I call you out of order, sir.
Oh, well, it doesn't matter. But, but there's gonna be businesses that, that are-
Okay, folks, folks, I'm gonna call a recess.
There's gonna be businesses that are affected that are already existing.
We're in recess.
If, if we, if we do this, I just wish Derek would have had more time than ten minutes to, to look over this.
Well, let me be clear, Councilman Brazel, I didn't need more than ten minutes.
Derek, we are in recess right now.
Well, I mean, I don't think we voted for that, I, I'm, I'm prepared to answer this.
We don't have to vote for it, the chair, the chair can't call for recess.
I'm still gonna answer the question.
Well, you can do that, but I'm not gonna sit here and let you just-
So, I had-
And let you just talk when you're not supposed to talk.
I don't need more than ten minutes to know something I've been thinking about for three weeks. Here's the other problem. The, the ordinance as it exists would allow someone on a one-acre R-15 or R-10 plot-
We're in recess.
-to put fitness centers, golf and country clubs, amusement parks, and arcades. That's what the other amusements category is. And what you've got here in this, with this other amusements, one of the many problems I have is, it's gonna allow any of that stuff in a residential area. I can literally build a small amusement park, charge admission for it, and put it in my backyard in the unincorporated areas of the county. That's what this ordinance does at present. Is that correct, Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, and, and again, thank you, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Vice Chairman, are we in a place where we can respond?
Do you feel we are?
It's up to you, or you-
Welcome to Kershaw County.
Let me tell you something, let me tell you something. I did call, let me tell you, I did call for recess, and I, I don't, I don't like you being talked over when you're asked a question. I think it's disrespectful to you, and I'll stand for, and I think it's disrespectful for Mr. Brazel to be talking over other people and not being recognized. And you know, Mr. Brazel, you and I get along fine, we get along fine with a lot of things, but, but you're wrong on that, and you know you are. No, 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 you know you're wrong, you overtalked, you didn't ask to be recognized when somebody else had the floor. And, and all I'm asking y'all to do is just abide by the rules of the, yes, of the meeting, and we're back in order. But now, having said that, Mr. Schumake?
Yes.
You have any comments?
Not, not other than what I said.
I'm, I'm gonna let the attorney speak in just a second. Okay?
Yeah, I've said the comments that, that I have.
I think you've done a good job, Mr. Schumake, in explaining your point on that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Can we strike other amusements?
Hold on a second, wait one, please, wait one second. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and again, um, the, as, as you know, the county attorney does not take any position on policy matters. When we're asked questions to research legal issues or ask specific questions, as we were in this case, regarding the applicability of an ordinance and possible implications, our job is to research it and report back, which is what we did.
And you did a good job on that.
And, and as requested, we prepared, um, a very short, I think, five-line, um, memorandum or, uh, motion, and, and I understand it was for you, if you chose to make it, um, and, um, and we did that for you. Um, you asked me to reach out to Mr. Brazel, which I did prior to the meeting today, um, and you introduced me to Mr. Schumake in the hall, who, um, I think we've seen each other, but I don't know that we've actually ever met, um, before today, and, um, asked me to explain your concerns, which I did, um, and identify, you know, the issues that we looked at. Um, and as I told Mr. Brazel, we, we take no position whether it passes or not.
Sure, I know that.
It does, if it passes, you know, as is, fine, that, that is, that is not a role for county, the county attorney to be involved in, that's a matter for council, and we're happy to answer any questions about it, as I did with Mr. Thomason regarding, you know, if we can, and my, as I told you in law school, either you can answer the question, or you can tell people you'll find out the answer. So, try not to guess, but I'll do my best.
You did, you did a good job, Mr. Brazel.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Hold on, Mr. Brazel, any comments? Anything you wanna say?
I think it was all a setup. It's what, what I think. I think it was all set up, and I was called about thirty minutes prior to the meeting and trying to be swayed into, into changing my mind, which I won't.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Thompson?
I'm ready to vote.
All right. Okay, we have the amendment on the floor, correct?
Yes, the amendment is on the floor.
Oh, Mr. Tucker, do you have anything you wanna say? Is he with us?
Oh, I'm with you, I'm just, I'm so confused once again.
Well, I, I know you-
I have nothing to say.
Okay, well, I have something to say, but I'll say it in, in just a few minutes. All right, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote on the amendment?
I vote yes on the amendment.
Okay, so the, the amendment is three, four, how many against? To, uh, Mr. Brazel and Mr. Thomason vote no, so therefore the amendment passes. That's, the ordinance as amended, we'll take a vote on that. All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, raise your hand. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
All right, he votes yes. How many vote against? Mr. Brazel and Mr. Thomason vote against, so it passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, let me say something else, too, and I, I'm gonna be very clear about this, how I feel. You know, the comment was just made that, uh, this was set up. I, I really take that personally. I think this council meeting was set up tonight to be disrupted. And I'm not go, and, and, and I'm very disappointed that nobody ever tried to set anybody up on this ordinance. It was done early, people were called early, they, they, he was unable to get in touch with anybody, but to sit here and say that this was a setup, what was a setup and a shame is that I'm running the meeting, and it was deliberately gonna be sabotaged with me running the meeting. And I know that, and I don't appreciate it, I'm very disappointed. All right, let's move to the next item. New business?
New business?
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, this is dealing with the state insurance benefits program regarding the county and municipality council members. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the benefits, uh, that the council currently have with P-Buck.
All right, we have a motion, but Mr. Tucker, on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we'll second, Mr. Schumake, any discussion? All right. All those in favor? Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, let the record show that, how many hands up, who are, who are all in favor? Okay, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Thomason, Jim Doesville, yes, it passes, unanimous, okay. Airport engineers. I don't have any explanation of this, we'll go, move forward, is there a motion to put that on the floor?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Can the county?
Yeah, airport, yes, for the airport. Mr. Schumake, you made the motion, Mr. Schumake.
I'll have the county administrator give us one, but-
Thank you, very good. Mr. Schumake made the motion. All right, is there a second?
Second with the caveat, can the county administrator explain what we have here?
Did you make the second, Mr. Tucker? I couldn't hear.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm making the second.
He made the motion, correct?
Oh, Miss, no, Mr. Schumake made the motion.
Yeah.
And then, Mr. Tucker, are you making the second?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
With explanations from the county administrator.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you, that's good clarification. All right, we have it on, all of those, okay, we have it on the floor for a second, and a motion, so we go to discussion. Mr. Templar, turn it over to you, since there's nothing here.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, members of council. What you have before you is a, a bid approval request, uh, for our airport engineering. This relates to projects that we have out there that comply with FAA standards. Um, this is an FAA requirement that we go out for, to put this, this service back out to bid. Um, again, it's just part of the FAA mandates that, that, that number so many. Um, with, with a careful review process, uh, you see the, the, the candidates in front of you, and based on the evaluation of the committee, the committee that was formed just internally with procurement and airport staff and, and Mr. Blanchard as well, um, we looked at several criteria, and, um, the, the results were that W.K. Dixon be retained. They have been long-term airport engineers for us, they, they know the history of that airport, they've been very responsive, and they've also come through, and, and just in my experience, pretty clutch when it comes to, um, some funding shortfalls, when there were change orders, or just we ran into some problems out there, and they were able to very quickly, um, get with the FAA and secure some federal grant money, which was, to me, very impressive, and I just don't know that any of the other, uh, candidates would have that ability. So they, they have saved us money, and, um, and so I, I would certainly recommend going with W.K. Dixon.
All right, are there any questions, any discussion? And what was the amount again?
So, so, that's, that's a great question. The, the, there are no amounts, because normally the engineering is part of the project, so it, it, that's probably ninety-nine point nine percent of our projects are FAA funded, with just some grant match, and so their funds, their fees rather, would be taken out of the project, and a vast majority of what we do out at the airport is through FAA grants and the state aeronautics.
How much is that? How much, how much we talking, we talking about fees and other things?
It, it varies, uh, based on, so our drainage project out there was, that was a six million dollar project, we did that some years ago, so it would be dependent on the overall cost of the project.
So you're asking us to approve?
Just the services, um, so there's no, again, this is unlike other, uh, some of the, um, the bids we approve where there's a dollar amount, but this just is more of a performance measure than it is a dollar amount, so.
To, to be clear, if I may, uh, if I understand you, Danny, what you're saying is that this will not result in the expenditure of any substantial county funds. Obviously, if it were to result in that, you would have to come back to us with a dollar amount. This is just approving these guys to do the work that the FAA is gonna pay for.
They pay, they are paid through grant funding.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? All, Mr. Tucker, do you have any questions?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
You're, you're good, okay. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Mr. Tucker, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, and let it show that it's unanimous. All right. Administrator's briefing. The three same things we see every week.
No, council briefing, ain't it?
Yeah. No, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, council briefing, exactly, I apologize, you're right, I jumped right over there. All right, council briefing. Mr. Brazel, I'll start with you.
It was nice to see, uh, Mr. James out here tonight, that, I thought that was, that was wonderful to get to honor him and his family, Derek, thank you for, for doing that.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and you know I love all you guys, even when we disagree. I learn from the best up here, y'all, I can tell you that right now. I learned from the best here on Kershaw County Council, and I'm proud to be here with you guys. That's it.
Mr. Schumake?
Um, I agree with all of Russell's words. I would also like to say a brief shout-out, obviously, to Mr. James, Judge James, Mayor James, awesome dude, but also a shout-out to, uh, my son and to Russell's son, and anyone else out there who has kids in boy state this week. So, I don't know if you've been doing, I've been doing wrestling, looking at pictures and stuff, trying to find your boy and all that, but our kids are in boy state, learning the reality of politics, whatever that means. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Uh, Mr. Thompson?
No briefing, Mr. Vice Chairman.
No briefing. How about you, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir, this, shortly, I would just like to, um, invite all of my colleagues, um, and the public for June the twenty-seventh at the, um, Art with Ms. Dolly, um, of the, uh, revealing of the mural on June the twenty-seventh at seven PM. So if you guys can make it, and ladies can make it, uh, she would appreciate your presence. So, thank you very much, that's gonna conclude my report.
Thank you so much. I, now, I do have some things I wanna say, and I wanna talk about just for a quick moment. I wanna welcome some of my friends here tonight, appreciate y'all being here. I don't, I'm so glad that Mr. James was here, uh, Judge James, Mayor James, and we were able to celebrate him, and, and he was to leave, I'm, I'm so glad he didn't have to sit here and watch the way things, uh, happened tonight. I am, uh, disappointed. My family has been attacked, I'm running for chair, things have been said about us, my wife and I, my friends, the Alpha Center. I'm not gonna stand for it. And then I get up here tonight, and I feel like this meeting was totally tore apart for political reasons. I am very upset. And, and folks, let me just tell you something right now, I don't back down, and I don't bow down. And, uh, but you're not gonna make, you, you, people are not gonna just take this political position and come out and try to destroy an agency who has put so much into this community. I have so much respect for Mr. Paul Napper sitting over there, he has worked all his life, he has saved lives. Well, thank you, buddy, I know what you've done. There's some things you can't even talk about that you've witnessed, that you've put through. You've built a legacy with the Alpha Center, and I'm gonna talk about the Alpha Center, even though my wife's the executive director, if you, I don't care if you like it or not, I've never voted on anything for the Alpha Center, I've always recused myself, I don't appreciate the lies that have been put out there. I don't appreciate the innuendos about my family being put out there. Oh, why? Because I'm running for chair? Well, I'm gonna run for chair, and I'm, I'm gonna stick with it, now people leave, vote me in, they vote me out, that's up to them. But I don't appreciate the things that have been going on. I've never seen as gutter politics as I've seen here in this. If I embarrass somebody, I make no apologies. But this, bottom line is, we're, we're gonna run this meeting, it's gonna be ran by the rules, we're gonna respect the rules, we, we're not gonna just speak up, and we're gonna act out, and holler at it anytime we want. That was a blatant disrespect to me as the chairman of this county council. To destroy this meeting, to make it look as if I couldn't run a meeting, I know exactly what you were doing tonight. Folks, I have enjoyed serving this county, I have served this county for eighteen years, I have served this county for twenty-eight years prior to that. I have given my life to public service. I have stood up, and I have fought, and I have stood alone, I have been, I have had council members try to indict me, criminally charged me fifteen years ago, sixteen years ago, falsely accused me of sabotaging because I brought the truth to county council. Well, you know what? The county administrator was arrested and put in jail for filing false reports against me. And now the same thing's happening again. Well, I don't bow down, and I'm not gonna take it. If people say, well, you know, Jimmy, you know, you might want to just not say this and that, no, 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 I'll carry my fight to the public. I'll let the public be the judge. I wanna thank the people of Kershaw County for allowing me to serve them the time I have. I don't wanna thank my wonderful wife, who has done a wonderful job in serving the people in this county. She's done a wonderful job, I've seen her on Sunday mornings go to houses to save lives. I've seen her, she and I, on our anniversary, have to go by and see somebody because she was trying to save somebody with an addiction. For the trash to be put out there about her and Paul Napper, I'm not gonna stand for it in the Alpha Center. All because of why? I'm running for chair? And then this happens tonight on county council. It's no coincidence. I make no apologies to anybody. And I, again, I wanna thank the people of Kershaw County for letting me serve, and I wanna tell you something else, too, there's another agency that I'm gonna be addressing that needs to be addressed, and I'll do that another time. But, uh, thank you to the public. And with that, Mr. Danny Templar, you have anything?
Just a few quick items, there's, um, on my three items here, the reoccurring items, no real change in status from the design and permitting process that's currently going on with our wastewater expansion project, boat ramp, uh, we continue to push there, a lot of the due diligence has been done, so I expect, um, bar chart schedules for each of those projects. Um, I thought I would've had them by now. Woodward Park, they continue to look at some value engineering. Uh, the turn lane is gonna be a little more expensive, as DOT's traffic study has indicated, we need a, a turn lane out there to make sure everybody gets in and out safely on, We need a turn lane out there to make sure everybody gets in and out safely on from Highway 1 there, or DeKalb, onto Chestnut Ferry. So, we're just still not behind on that. We're just still looking for ways to trim a little bit of money on the project and still maintain the spirit in which we want to have that project out there. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Templer. Appreciate it. All right, do we have a report from our legal?
Mr. Jones, Mr. Attorney Chairman, no report from legal briefing at this time. I just would again like to thank everyone for coming, especially the director, Mr. Brazel.
Talk into mic, please. I'm sorry.
The information that was provided really was provided at the request, and it was a matter of information. I'm glad that we had an opportunity to talk today before the meeting, so that I was able to provide the information to you before this meeting. And it's certainly available for any questions that you have about it after this meeting. And hopefully, we'll be able to, if there are any other questions or any recommended changes which you might want to do in the future, we'd be happy to try to assist and provide that information to you as well.
Well, it would have been helpful if you said you called me. I don't know which number. I've got two numbers, which number you called. But I'll be happy to provide my personal number to you to make sure that we can be in touch. It would have been nice if I would have had an email with the intended changes, so I could have had some time to look over it. Because that's what I didn't really have. I didn't have any time. We chatted about family and friends and life in general, didn't we? We had a good conversation, and we talked about what it would look like if we did pass and if we didn't pass it. But you didn't offer me the amendment prior to the meeting. I would have liked to have seen the amendment prior to the meeting.
Well, it was certainly my intention to express when Mr. Jones was there, some of his concerns and what the proposal was. And, you know, I didn't know if the proposal would be brought up today or not. Quite frankly, I didn't know. And Mr. Jones told me he wasn't sure if he was going to bring it up. And so, you know, I...
We're just...
It was an amendment that I was asked to prepare. I didn't know if it was going to be... In fact, Mr. Jones didn't bring it up. Mr. Schumay was the one. So, you know, again, I apologize for the misunderstanding, but I, you know, it was...
It's passed now, isn't it? It's the past third reading, so...
It was a couple of lines that we wrote.
But it's no issue. I think there's obviously good intention in what you did and what Mr. Jones did as well. And I want to say to Mr. Jones that just because we disagreed on that one issue, I apologize for talking over you.
It's not a matter of disagreeing, Mr. Tucker. Let me just tell you something.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Brazel, it's not about talking over me. It's the fact that you absolutely just didn't pay any attention to the rules of this meeting tonight. And I think you did it deliberately to make me...
No, that's not true at all.
...disrespect me. I believe that in my whole life.
That's not true at all. Now, we're friends, and that's not true. That's not true at all.
With most respect to you, Mr. Brazel, and I enjoyed talking with you. And again, if there... I tried to relay the concerns that had been relayed to us and what we had found, and I hope I was able to relay those.
Thank you. You did. You did a good job. All right. No legal... Okay, we have an executive session.
Do we need that?
I'm asking, do we need executive session? It says here, "Executive session received legal advice related to matters covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to what?"
This is a...
That's just standard.
Okay, this is just standard. So, you don't need an executive session tonight?
Yes, I would like one, just to let y'all know of an issue that we have coming up that could result in some litigation. It should be probably five, six minutes tops.
Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session?
I would make a motion we go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker, is it all in favor? Let the director show that it's unanimous. We're in...
Attorney Chairman, you do need to state the reason that you're going into executive session, which...
For a potential enforcement issue, action.
Enforcement action issue. Mr. Robinson, is that permissible?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thirty-four dash...
All right. All right, we're in executive session.